Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 12, 2006, meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called Order 6:02 PM. We have a roll call.
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero on the invocation by City Clerk Carter Kasalka. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor and council, yesterday was quite an emotional day for Americans, no matter where they were, whether here in the states or abroad, and I'd like to take this moment to ask that everyone join us throughout the city of Glendale for a moment of silence for the victims of September 11, 2001. Now let us pray. This evening, we pray for the innocent lives lost on September 11, 2001. We remember the survivors and loved ones of those who perished during the terrible attacks on our nation. We pray for those brave men and women who were amongst the first responders and paid the ultimate sacrifice by putting duty above their own welfare and personal safety. We pray for our brave men and women who serve in all branches of our armed forces in all corners of the world. We pray for their safety and for their families who await their return home. We pray for courage and for strength so that we may face the challenges that still lie ahead. We pray for patience and for understanding and for wisdom. These virtues we pray for so that our children will learn from us and know that we will not fight hate with even more, succumbing to our worst fears. In the face of death, let us honor life and thus overcome evil with good. Let us pray that we live our lives such that what those who perished in 9/11 left unfinished on this earth becomes the legacy of our everyday lives. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have your report?
The agenda for the September 12, 2006, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 7, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Presentations and appointments. At 3 A's Agenda Preview for the meeting of September 19, 2006.
I'll go to Elaine Aguilera.
Mayor. The September 19 meetings of the City Council Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency. The Glendale Redevelopment Agency will be meeting to review, design review for signage for the business Color Me Mine located at 3720 San Fernando Road. There's a joint public hearing of the Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. It will be a public hearing regarding certification of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring program and review and approval of Stage 1 Design Review of a proposed affordable housing project located at 6200 San Fernando Road. There's also a study session at 2:30 in the afternoon of the Glendale City Council regarding the downtown specific plan mobility study, in particular discussion of freeway access and capacity enhancements. And lastly, the Glendale City Council will be meeting a number of consent items on the agenda from Glendale Water and Power regarding valve replacement project, a request for proposals to conduct a power systems analysis, and the design and construction support services for the final design of the replacement for the Chevy Chase 968 reservoir and booster pump, and an item from the Public Works Department regarding the Glen Oaks Boulevard rehabilitation project. There is one ordinance for adoption, scheduled for adoption by the City Council, and it amends various sections of the Mispo Code for revisions and miscellaneous cleanup amendments to the subdivision and zoning code. And there are two action items, one of them Parks and Recreation, a negotiated agreement for the Cerrito School Park Construction Project at 3690 San Fernando Road, and an item from the City Manager's Office and Director of Public Works regarding sponsorship of Glendale's marketing activities and the exclusive provision of soda, juice, and snacks. And lastly, two, well, one public hearing, proposed ordinance amending titles 90 and 30 of the Mispo Code and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating to outdoor grilling at commercial establishments. And the second item is a proposed ordinance amending title 30 of the Mispo Code relating to density bonus incentives, and it's my understanding the motion on that one is to continue that hearing to October 17. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There's one unscheduled item under Presentations. I think I asked Scott Silver to come up. Mr. Yusefian, you want to handle this?
Mayor, you can handle it.
Hi. Mayor Weaver, council members, staff, thank you for having me. My name is Scott Silver. I represent the owners and the tenants of the Glendale Marketplace on Brand Boulevard, and I'm here before you to present a check for $5,000. This is a donation for the Unity Fest 2006 Festival, and this is a donation from the Glendale Marketplace. We're making this contribution as a part of all of our many efforts to be an active participant in the Glendale civic community. The Glendale Marketplace was acquired by my partners and I over a year ago with the goal to become a community destination and a family-friendly shopping center and entertainment center. In meeting these goals in the last year, we've taken a few important steps. At the shopping center, we've expanded the very popular Mommy and Me program where we offer Mommy and Me classes the first and third Mondays each month in the lobby of the Mann Theaters, and we've completed a restoration to the landmark Green Frog's Water Fountain on Brand. And perhaps most importantly, we've employed the same security force used at the Glendale Galleria across the street, and we've actively worked with the local police department to ensure that we've got top-notch private security and that we are providing an outdoor place for families to enjoy great food and to shop and to go to the movies during the day and in the evening. On behalf of the Glendale Marketplace, we're always looking for a place to, a way to be a part of the community, and we're thrilled to support this Unity Fest event. We're looking forward to participating, and I just want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Yusefian.
Okay.
Who's it made out to?
Thank you. It's made out to Unity Fest.
It's made out to the city of Glendale, so I'll give it back over to Yasmin. Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate that very much. As you know, Mr. Mayor, Unity Fest had several levels of sponsorship, silver, gold, and platinum, and the gentleman was generous enough to be at the platinum category. So I hope we will see you in more casual mode at the Unity Fest, at the booth, and you could talk about your center, and I understand some exciting restaurants and also other retail coming to that center, very vital center, going to be very close to town center, so that's good.
Yeah, I think we can look for some great surprises at the end of this year in January, February, as far as some exciting new retailers that will be opening at the center.
And I know many families with little ones are very excited about the frogs. For a while, it had gotten some problems. He wasn't spitting properly, and so I'm glad that you took care of it.
Our frogs spit and ribbit.
Yeah.
They're newly painted green, and my kids are happy about that.
Right, and some of the other turtles and all the stuff were missing, so I guess you put those back. Thank you.
We did have a missing beaver.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause) Mr. Mayor, at this point, I also would like to put something on the agenda, if you don't mind, under appointments. After Madeline's plea for more members on CDBG, I had gone around and looked for some people who were highly qualified. I ended up finding somebody who's unfortunately graduated from USC, so what can I tell you?
That's not unfortunate.
And what's even a rub to me, but you will love this, the guy happens to be an engineer.
That's even double.
And he is, he wasn't an engineer, he worked for Boeing Aerospace in the Rocketdyne Division, so real rocket scientist to an extent.
I gotta meet this guy.
And the man basically was a manager, and he managed projects that were approximately $10 million. So this is a big thing. And he happens to be a Korean-American, and he's currently the president of Korean-American Chamber of Commerce in LA. But he does live in Glendale, and he is a registered voter, so we had him checked. And so I would like to put the nomination of Chang E Lee on the agenda for CDBG on my behalf.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
I would like to reappoint to the Design Review Board for the Landscape Architect Post, Michael James.
It is so noted. Any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
I'd like to report briefly that I did attend the League of Cities Annual Conference. Attended many worthwhile and stimulating classes dealing with special assessment districts, with litter, with water, with, I attended a few city attorney programs as well, Wi-Fi. And one of the most memorable was a special seminar given by Yolo County Judge, who's a parliamentarian, expert in parliamentary procedure, and he gave a seminar on how to run a city council meeting. One of the most interesting things that he implored that we stick to, actually, he's speaking to those mayors or those people that be running the meeting, is that he never, that person running the meeting, never, ever let a councilman speak more than twice on one subject.
You got that on tape?
Only let that councilman speak the second time after everyone on the dais has had a chance to speak. He also said--
I gotta meet this guy.
He also said it is imperative to keep the meeting moving along that each councilman be given no more than 10 minutes of speaking time on any particular subject. That would force them, he said, to condense and really focus in on the important issues that he has before him.
What do we have to do, establish a policy? Is that his recommendation?
Well, it's entirely up to the--
We can make it an ordinance.
--person running the meeting. But it was very interesting. There were a few objections from people in the audience.
Was Bob there?
I was not there, so I can't verify that information.
So you weren't one of the objections? Oh, I like that. That was--
And on a different note, I would like to inquire, I know we've been talking about ADA issues and access to the chambers, but it occurred to me that should someone with a disability be elected to council and be forced to sit back here or to be appointed and hired as one of the executive staff, there may be some issues with their ingress and egress back behind here. So I know we have our ADA director. If you could maybe come back to us with some information on that, I would appreciate that.
And that's one thing that we have discussed, Councilmember Najarian, extensively with Public Works and also with the police department regarding other issues, and that's something that we will come back to.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I would like to add one thing, one item to the conference. As I was going through the expo, I approached a SCAG table, and surprising to me was SCAG has a number of services available to cities that are free, including in that our consulting services on a number of issues that face cities. I've never seen us take advantage of that service, but I think it's worthwhile to save the city of Glendale money to employ their services, their consultants, whenever possible. So that's one. And second, I would like to plug Relay for Life. I know there are, there were individuals here who were going to speak on this issue. They're might, well, they're still here, but--
They're coming up.
They're coming up? Okay. It's on October 7th and 8th. It's the largest campout to find a cure for cancer, and I would like to make a plea to the community at this time to those who have not sponsored it to come forward and sponsor this event, because it's an important event in the life of the city of Glendale. And it's, all the causes that we advocate here are important, but I think none are as important as finding a cure for cancer. So I, if you've sponsored a number of items this year, please take a moment to also consider sponsoring Glendale Relay for Life to find a cure for cancer for the American Cancer Society. It's, as you can see, that will come up a little later as well. If you need additional information, you can call Linda Patrick at 548-3351. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? This is your second.
Well, I think we went from presentation into council comments. We kind of rolled in without the city--
No, we haven't got the city council comments.
Okay. I'll repeat myself when we get to that.
Unnecessary. Just read it into the record.
You use up your 10 minutes.
We did number four, city council staff comments already, unless somebody else has another city council.
Council?
Well, I have one more.
One more? Okay.
All right. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have to have an ordinance first, right, before that 10-minute thing?
Don't worry, staff's working on it as we speak.
All right. One of the items that I like to talk about is Unity Fest, and as you know, October 1st is rapidly approaching, and we're going to start our Unity Fest that day. I know some of you have seen some banners out there, and it has the wrong date on it. I noticed that. Don't pay attention to that. It was a mistake that was made. My understanding is it's, they're in the process of fixing that. It's going to be happening in this year, not 2005, it's 2006, and it is going to be in October 1st. It will be from 1 o'clock, I mean, from 12 to 6. We also, in the process of doing this, we did have some commercials, PSAs, made, so I would like to ask the staff downstairs if they could play the PSAs. These are 30-second PSAs. Could you please run those PSAs now?
The city of Glendale will host its fifth annual Unity Fest cultural event on Sunday, October 1st, from 12 to 6 PM at Verdugo Park. The event will feature ethnic food, arts and craft booths, entertainment, and children's games and activities. Admission and parking are free. People who are interested in performing, sponsorship, or vendor opportunities should contact Eve Rappaport at 818-548-2780.
And of course, there's an Armenian version, but I just wanted to stop at this point because there is a lot of, I don't want to be accused of extending the city council meeting too late. Nevertheless, there are four different languages that are playing in different channels. The Armenians, of course, are going to play in some of the Armenian channels. We have the Hispanic ones running on some Hispanic television and Koreans in the Korean channel. We did go out and ask for some sponsors, so I would like to thank some of the sponsors that came out to us. There was a silver sponsor is our Lexus of Glendale. A gold sponsor were Glendale News Press, who is providing us some of the ads in the paper that you will see soon. There were platinum sponsors, which are $5,000, and that was AT&amp;T, Advanced Developments and Investment Incorporated, Glendale Marketplace, and Charter Communication. And I think there's one more sponsor coming in, and I think that is the Amity Group. So thank you for all the sponsors. Appreciate that very much, and I think this year is going to be a very good Unity Fest. We're also going to reach majority of the schools through our commissioner that is on arts and culture. She is making the schools available, so there will be a flyer that will go to the students and their parents, informing them the day and events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. That's the comments. What's next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Yusefian. Mayor, I will pull 5A and move rest of them.
Okay. Is there, and it's the second at roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Would somebody like to move 1A?
I'll move 5A. The minutes.
Second.
Okay, move them second at roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Epstein.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Six is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you for speaker. Does Amy Blais?
Yes.
I think, and Anna Maria? Do you want to do a tag team?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr., see, I work at a hospital all day.
You can call me Doctor.
Yes. Mr. Manukian, and for his introduction to Relay for Life, and thank you, Mr. Weaver, Mayor, and council members for this opportunity. I am the Mission Delivery Chair for the Glendale Relay for Life, and I just want to give you a few facts on why this is so important. I know the six degrees of separation of having a family member or a dear friend who's been touched by cancer or affected by cancer is all around us. Actually, the statistic is one in two men will develop cancer in their lifetime. One in three women will develop cancer in their lifetime. The Relay for Life, the Mission Delivery helps participants understand why we're doing this event. We're not just raising money, we're raising awareness. We're raising awareness to help people understand what the screening guidelines are for colon cancer, breast cancer, cervical cancer, prostate cancer. We're, part of the Mission Delivery is the big tobacco tax initiative that's going on right now in our state by raising awareness about trying to keep our youth from beginning smoking, because we know that smoking causes cancer. The Relay also provides an educational forum. We will have booths set up to talk about nutrition and about how it affects our community. We actually, last year, had 80 survivors participate, and my coworker Mary Eichenhofer is also a cancer survivor and chair of that committee. Over 100 survivors receive services in the city of Glendale, either through hospital-based programs called Look Good, Feel Better, or patient transportation, advocacy, and education. Myself, I'm an educator for breast self-exam, so I go out in the community to businesses to educate women on how to do a correct breast self-exam. So the Relay for Life, we certainly need your support. We need your connections to find sponsors to help support this event. We appreciate all the city of Glendale has done to support the event, and so we ask that you get involved and so we can make a difference, continue to make a difference in the community. So thank you. I know my teammates have a few more things to tell you, so I'll turn the mic off.
My name is Anna Maria Demirjian, Mr. Mayor, and city council members and staff. I just wanted to add that on behalf of the Glendale Relay for Life, we will be having a fundraiser on September 14 at the Habit, and 20% of the net proceeds will go to the American Cancer Society and the Glendale Relay for Life. And also, on September 24, from 5:30 to 8:30, there will be a dinner at the Far Nenta Restaurant, where there will be a silent auction, and a few other gifts will be given, and also 20% of the proceeds will go towards the cause. And if anyone has any questions, you can call at 818-240-7916. And we would all like to encourage you to attend these places and help us to raise money towards this cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Dr. Richard Espiritu, followed by Bonnie Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, and Mr. Audid Kasakian. Mr. Mayor, I am Dr. Richard Espiritu. On May the 22nd, oh, I'm sorry, on May the 2nd, 2006, there was a contract awarded to a company called TDM Architects for the sum of $99,355. This was to do an update, repeat, an update on the 1994 site survey for ADA. It's been four months. What is the status? Or is this going to be like the 1994 survey that sat around and collected dust for all for a long period of time? The other question is, a while back, we had a very interesting issue. We talked about this. Mr. Yusefian, you made some comments about the fire alarms and sprinkler system. If I look here in the city council chambers, where are the fire alarms? Where are the sprinkler systems? I understand they're being put in, but don't we need to have the fire alarms? According to my information, these things were pulled, the permits were pulled on June the 16th for the alarms and on June the 26th for the sprinklers. And I talked to the project manager this afternoon, and we're still kind of in, up in the air. I also talked to the project manager regarding the site survey, and they kind of gave me a runaround, trying to say, well, I don't know what's going on yet. So I would really like to know what is happening with this site survey, because a lot of issues regarding the Americans with disability is predicated on that site survey. The corrections for Mr. Arti Kasakian's office and city clerk's office, we need the site survey to tell us that the countertops are not the right size. I had a great opportunity to speak to Mr. Stuart Tom. He says, well, we were pushing the various retailers here in the city of Glendale, and I says, what about the city clerk's office? And he says, there is not quite compliant. But we're still waiting for that site survey. So my question once again, what is going on with the site survey? When will it be available? And Mrs. Spears, if, once it's available, if you give me a call, I'll run down here, promise I'll walk down or take the bus, and I'll pay for a coffee. I don't mind. So thank you very much for your time and consideration. I would like to know what's going on with that survey.
Mrs. Spears, would you get ahold of him tomorrow and give him a report tomorrow? Thank you. Next speaker, Bonnie Adams, followed by Tamara Osessi. Next speaker, Bonnie Adams, followed by Tamara Mosessian. Next, him first.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Adams. I guess everybody seems to be a bit late with everything this, this year. You must have all had good summers. I must have been in a coma. I know I haven't been to some of the council meetings in August, and I'm sure you're all breathing a sigh of relief. I was very ill, and I couldn't make them. However, I requested an ordinance amendment months and months ago, and I was told that a decision would be made and a report would be get, given to me by August. Now, unless I missed a month, I, somewhere, unless I missed some days, this is not August. And I, I really think that's important. And I, I want, I'd like the answer to this question about the amendment to the ordinance for the, that I proposed for the under sixty-two low-income population to be exempt from the utility tax from GWP. Now, I don't know where everybody is, but, you know. The other thing I'd like to bring up is the fact that this whole, this whole, the way this whole place is being run, I mean, you're all penny-wise and pound-foolish. I mean, I've never seen so much money run amok and mismanaged in a long time. When you had the discussions a few weeks ago about the libraries, I was really disgusted. I mean, you're talking about, on the one hand, paying four hundred and seven, for a piece of land that was assessed at four hundred and seventy-five thousand, you paid them, you paid somebody six million dollars. And all these libraries need and want our funding for expansion and new equipment, and you're arguing about a few thousand dollars. I don't get it. I mean, there's something wrong with this picture. And I, I, that really disturbed me. And I don't know, I, I don't know why this is happening. I mean, I don't know why this debate even came up. It's, it's ridiculous. The other thing I want to remind people is that for service dog owners especially, but for all pet owners, the first commandment of pet owning is thou shalt clean up after thine own service pet, whether it's a dog, whether it's a monkey, whether it's a cat, whether it's a turtle, I don't care. You have to clean up after your dogs and your animals, because if you don't, you're going to have an awful lot of neighbors complaining. And I've had this experience already, and I just want to remind people that it's just common courtesy to take responsibilities. I mean, you clean your ki, you clean your kids up, would you not? And as far as the sixty-two-hundred San Fernando Road project is concerned, I am still very much against it. I am going to be at the redevelopment meeting next Tuesday. I encourage all, anybody to come, especially disabled people. I encourage them to come to this meeting and speak one way or the other. And I, I'm going to read my letter that I had originally submitted to the design review board, and it'll be read not only in the redevelopment meeting, but in the council meeting that night, and, because I want everybody to hear it. Okay? Thank you.
Would you please give a report to her tomorrow?
So that everybody in the public knows also, Mr. Mayor, the UUT ordinance will come to the city council on September twenty-sixth.
Okay, and the public generally doesn't request an ordinance of the city council. There's two hundred and seventy thousand people in this city, and this council does not react to one person requesting an ordinance change. We'll discuss it and make recommendations to staff. Also, if anybody watched the study session this morning, we found out over ninety percent of the people in this city greatly appreciate the job this city is doing, the staff people, the council, et cetera. Ninety percent is a hot, pretty high amount. So, I think we're pretty good. We're not as bad as is portrayed here sometimes. Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Mosessian. I don't know if I got it right.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good? Mm-hmm. Followed by Barry Allen.
I will have to translate for the speaker. She has a, she has a problem with her landlords and is asking for help in solving this problem.
Her name from the record?
Ah. Tamara Mosessian. Ah, Mosessian. Apartment twenty-two, North Adams. Apartment twenty-two. She's, 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 she's,
That have been suggested to be made have been made.
Are you, did you put the clock on at all?
[speaking Spanish]
This is a, this is my plea to you, to the council. How, how can the city, how can the city assist me? I don't know where to turn to for help or assistance. Um, I want to know what course, what recourse I have, uh, to get out of this situation.
I don't know if the city's aware of this case, but if we could get her phone number, staff could talk to her tomorrow. And it sounds like code enforcement should be involved in this, if they aren't already. It has been going on three years.
Mr. Mayor, if it's been going on three years, then there, there should be a-
There should be a file.
If it hasn't been resolved, there should be a legalized-
There should be, there should be a record somewhere. We'll check into it, both from the code enforcement, administratively, and also through our office. On the other side, there has been an unlawful detainer action which we can't interfere with. I, I don't know what the status of that is, if they're seeking to actually oust her from the unit, since apparently she's, in case she's lost, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and certainly the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, and, uh, I would like to actually thank the council for having this, uh, program broadcast by the internet. I've heard from numbers of people from last week. In fact, I want to say hello to John and Richard in Orlando, Florida, who contacted me. But I think more importantly, as you know, Vanguard is coming up on its first anniversary, the first of October, and certainly, we have done a lot to get more people interested in attending council meetings and paying attention to what the council is doing and getting involved in the fiscal accountability. Now, and I'm certain that Mayor Weaver is going to offer to provide a mayoral proclamation or certificate to Vanguard in two weeks, and will certainly be willing to accept that. Meanwhile-
You want it framed or not, Mr. Allen?
Oh, well, no, actually, we'll take it to Fast Frame over on, yeah, Fast Frame over on Brand, Vicki, uh-
Spend lots of money on the frames, so-
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It will be framed, right? But anyways, one of the things that, that came out last week was that our esteemed mayor mentioned that Vanguard had applied for 171 California Public Records Act requests at a cost of quarter of a million dollars. Well, in checking with Mr. Howard's office, he said he had no idea where the number came from, but that's okay. The fact of the matter is that getting public records is so important that the electorate voted for Prop 59 a few years ago, and the California Records Act and information from it is codified in the Constitution of the state of California. I think it's very significant to know that the state constitution says that we have, the public, has a right to receive documents at a reasonable cost. Now, one of the things that the Honorable Mayor forgot was that Vanguard does pay a per copy charge for information that it does receive, and in some cases, we have been requested to pay hundreds of dollars for programming fees. That's another issue. As we move on to the, the issues, one of them, of course, is the, uh, the Vanguard, which is constantly removed from City Hall, so if you want to get one, it's banned from Glendale City Hall. Here's your Vanguard issue. And also, you'll probably note that yesterday Governor Schwarzenegger signed a new law, a new statute, that says that the removal of 25 copies of free newspapers is an infraction if you're attempting to prevent people from reading those documents. And I think it may fall under, under that particular clause for those of whom look into it. Now, just earlier, I think we heard Mr. Weaver say something about 90% of the people of the public think the city is well-run. If that came from the long-range planning, I think there were, what, a total of 600 or people that participated in that? And if 90% of that 600 people, or what is that, 540 people, said everything is great, what happened to the other 206,900 and some odd people? Where, where were they? They weren't counted in that number. I think it's something we really have to look at when we're banding around numbers. And the other issue on accountability is that I assume that the Glendale Rosefloat Association will have the numbers for the dreaming of roses and the amount of money that it took in, uh, yes, or Sunday, and based upon their actual articles in the bylaws, that the money that they raise doesn't go for scholarships, and it doesn't go for lunches and dinners. It goes to the city of Glendale to reimburse the city for its expenses, its $90,000 expense in the Rosefloat. So, that's another issue that we call for, for accountability, and certainly, for those who would like to get a copy of that which has been banned from City Hall, you can do so by calling this number and asking to get Vanguard. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Mr. Weaver, I didn't know you were giving a commendation for the one-year anniversary.
I'm not. Uh, like, the public to know, all non-city paraphernalia, magazines, everything, are now removed from all the counters, thanks to Mr. Allen. On the 2, 171 requests, people are tending to forget, there was extensive staff time in all the departments to gather all the data that Mr., um, Mr. Allen says that he needs to review for accountability purposes. When you start adding up all the time that the police, the fire, public services, city attorney's office, whatever add up, it goes in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I only mention one fiscal year. You want to take Mr. Allen back the year before into the current year, we're probably well over 200 requests by now, and probably gone over $300,000. In the interest of accountability, I think the public have a right to know that one person is in essence spending the taxpayers' money to the tune of $200,000, $300,000. But he has a right to do that. So why don't the rest of you all come down and do that, and pretty soon, there won't be any money left in the city, because we'll be answering all their requests. You have a representative form of government, you elect five council members to do it. If you don't like us, vote it out. Elect Mr. Allen onto the city council, and then everything will be fine. And the third one, the survey, if you were listening this morning, it was not just the public meetings, we also had phone surveys. Phone surveys have statistical data, uh, you take a sampling, and it was rendered to be a very good survey, and they were quite similar in both panels, both the telephone and the, um, the meetings, a lot of correlation. The people in this city like this city. If they don't, where are they? I don't see the legions of people standing up here protesting what we're doing, asking for accountability. I do not see any emails. I do not see any letters. I do not see it in the press. I do not see it on the front page of the press. So if we're doing such a bad job, if we're not accountable to the public, where are they? Where are they screaming? It's the same few people that stand up every week and use the same words. I'm sorry, that doesn't fly in a city of 207,000 people. Herbert Milano, followed by Richard Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I know that today I, I missed the, uh, the long-range planning meeting. I know I've attended many of them, but I had to stop attending the long-range planning meetings after Mr. Rafi Menoukian left as mayor, because he was kind enough to allow me to speak early. When I started coming into those meetings to speak and give my opinion with regard to the long-range planning, I was moved back all the way to 10:58 in the morning, to the last two minutes remaining in the meeting.
That is the mayor's privilege to decide when the public speaks. Any mayor, any mayor has the privilege to decide that.
Do I get my minutes back?
And I can give them the time, too. Go on, Mr. Milano.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
If you've got something to tell us, we can help you with.
Yes, I would, this is, I think it is important for the public, because if the public finds it difficult to come forward and contribute of their time, my time is also expensive. And I think if I were to add up all of the hours that are given in the city of Glendale, I think it would be easily over $100,000 in my time alone.
Congratulations.
But I want to basically address the issue with regard to the public's right to know. Many of the issues that we come here, and, and I think I have done about four or five California Records Act requests, and the kind of information that I have requested is basic information that should be available and is available in many other cities' websites. Clear, simple information. How many miles of roadway will you fix or resurface next year and the following year, and how does that tie into the budget? Simple question. And yet, to get that information, I need to use the California Records Act. Simple questions of accountability with regard to how many years did we have before the power plants were actually fixed? Between 1980 and the year 2000, none. And you see, those are the basic issues that the city doesn't know. A week ago Friday, we had a power outage for two hours on Brand Boulevard, and all those merchants got hit. Now, does this matter? Of course it matters. But what happens in these meetings is that normally, the first half hour or the first 45 minutes is spent on a very significant amount of public relations work. Bring all of the charitable organizations, have the banter, move back the public comments down to item number six, and anyone tuning in to that station is going to say, my God, everything must be right with the city of Glendale. Because as soon as going there, there's just simple banter. Everything's going fine, there's a Unity Fest, you know, there's another charitable activity taking place, and they're all worthwhile, but they give the impression that everything is going well in Glendale. But Mr. Weaver, you could tell us whether or not we have a budget deficit or not. You can tell us whether or not we gave $10 million in raises, you know, to middle management this year. You can tell us a lot of other things with regard to your use of the police department for a private affair having to do with the, a beauty contest. Those are relevant issues that deal with trust and deal with accountability. We come to ask some basic questions because as a company owner, and as a manager, and as a supervisor, we know that generally, we don't get what we deserve, we get what we measure. And here is the public coming forth to basically ask for accountability. And I think it is within our right to do that. The information that we have been asking, and some of us have asked, is basic managerial information with regard to simple questions. How many full-time employees do you have or full-time equivalent? And I'm told you can't get that information. You have to wait another month or another month and a half until we get a whole new system. It's amazing. How many hours of overtime did we pay this past year? Simple managerial questions that we do not get, and for that, we have to use the California Records Act. It's amazing. So yes, I think that we have a council, or some people in council, who do not want to be accountable to the public, because you have been here way too long, to state to the public that you did not ask for special privileges. It's amazing when you control the salaries, when you control the increases in the staff over those individuals who say, I didn't ask for any special privileges. It's amazing. And then to say, well, if that's not okay, then this is for the benefit of Glendale. How? How is that measured? Somebody out there in the East Coast is saying, let's move our headquarters to Glendale because they have a beauty pageant out there. It's amazing to think that. They say, well, let's research it. There's 100 miles of roadway that need fixing. You know, it's going to take 11 more years to fix the, the sidewalks that need repair where individuals with disabilities are. It's amazing. And those are the type of basic accountability questions that we're asking for. There's nothing to be angry about. You know, there are many good things in Glendale. I wish we had the decency of Mr. Menoukian back as, as mayor, I truly do, because you were very decent in the way you conducted yourself, Mayor, Councilman Menoukian, and I wish we had that back. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. You're so far off target, I wouldn't know where to begin. First place, if you want to know anything in the budget, get a copy of the budget and read it like I did before I got elected. It's all there. Employees, number of employees, where they're employed, everything is in the budget. You want to know details, you want to micromanage the city, run for council, then you can sit up here and micromanage the city. As far as trying to throw in the beauty pageant again, I did absolutely nothing wrong, and there's a city attorney will sit here and say, I did not. I made a request. So to put this on the air nationwide and try to make it seem like I got special favors, you're so far off target, Mr. Milano. And we, who is we? It's you, Mr. Allen. Where are the thousands of legions of people standing behind you? You stand up here and so, and nobody listens to you. Well, I'm looking around, where are they? You're one person. You're one person. You get up here every week, the same old thing again. We're not accountable. Well, the majority of the people in this community who call me agree with me and not with you. Okay? And on the campaign trail, you can get up and campaign against me, and I'll take you on one-for-one on any topic you want. And you better have the facts and figures to back up what you're saying, because personally, I'm getting tired of you getting up here every week. I know it's getting election time, so you're going to try to dig into more dirt and create more controversy up here every week, and at some point in time, I'm going to put a stop to it. Because oral communications is supposed to be for you to have, that have a problem, to ask us as a city council to help you solve that problem. You're not asking us to help solve a problem you have. You're giving us a lecture every single week, and the public that calls me, they don't like it at all. But you have First Amendment rights, so you're going to continue to do it, no doubt about it. I've had it, but you're wasting your time.
Next speaker, Richard Wagner, followed by Debbie-
Can we use 10 minutes on him?
Be my guest. I don't guess for against me, what the heck. Richard Wagner, followed by Debbie DeShiro.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I would like to say, I think we have a great city government, right off the bat. I work, I, my name is Richard Wagner, and I work for Harley-Davidson of Glendale on San Fernando Row. We put on, uh, every year, we put on a toy drive for the Fred Jordan Mission, where we collect toys, have a parade, and for homeless children down at Fifth and Town in L.A. We've done this for 19 years, and, um, as time goes on, as time went on, the Glendale Police Department said we needed more security and more, and, and using their police officers. And which was fine for a time, but every year, the price has gone up. Now, what we're talking about is seven to eight officers plus a sergeant for all of two hours' work. And, uh, it's getting, uh, not gonna affect it for us.
How many officers?
Seven to eight, plus a sergeant.
Seven to eight, plus a sergeant.
And it's a maximum of two and a half hours, maybe, at tops.
Now, how much do you pay?
Last, this, for last year was almost $3,000. Before, before we could absorb it, but at the cost, it's just the cost is going so far up that we just can't absorb it anymore. But we would like to ask you, if we could, I guess you would call it a variance, if we could maybe, uh, use our own escort and security service, which is less than half of what we're paying now. On our event, we do not charge anybody any money, we don't sell anything. All we ask is that people to come down and bring their toys for homeless kids. And, um, we've never had any incidences, no accidents, in all the 19 years we've been doing this. And, um, I don't want to belittle any department, city department, and we have a great fire department, police department, but, uh, when this money is, you know, where are we going to come from, you know? And, uh, it's just getting to be a real problem. We, in, in our, all our press releases and articles done about this run, we've always mentioned the, the city and police department, the fire department, and it's all, you all have been really cooperative with us. But we're just asking if we could get some relief for this one event, and all we're talking about is we just close the streets, two little side streets down for two and a half hours, and then we go and donate these toys. And, uh, so if you could see where clear to give us, uh, some relief on this, we'd really appreciate it.
Unfortunately, I doubt that's going to happen. Mrs. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest that we'll go ahead and get your number, Mr. Wagner, and contact police department and get the background information on this and get back to you in the next couple of days in terms of, you know, if we have to do this, what are the reasons, and, and if we can change anything, we'll also let you know that. So we'll just look into it and, and give you a call, so if you can leave your number for us, please.
Okay, thank you.
And how, how many people attend the event approximately?
Oh, I would say it varies between, uh, 700, 800, uh, you know, it's, it's getting bigger. I mean, you know, but we can bring in an escort service that will, that will, you know, I mean, all the, if I could bring one more thing, they, the police only close down the one intersection so we can go down, uh, to L.A., and that's it. And so, you know, the, the escort service that we'll hire, will escort us all the way in and, uh, take care of security.
I, I think there will be a difference between private property and public, and public, I think Glendale P.D. will have to do it for safety reasons. On private property, like I did, I used private security this time. But, Ms. Beers and staff will-
What is the date of the, uh?
The date will be December 10th, if you, I could maybe show you that.
So you just want to use your own security to-
For crowd control, I don't think so.
Yeah, we'll just use, well, we'll hire a, a, a security-
Did the Ringtone get into trouble once during that?
Experience. No, these, these people, these services do that for a living, and so, you know, they know what they're doing.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it Debbie McLendon and Rob DeShiro?
Mr. Mayor, city council, um, we are here today on behalf of the Fred Jordan Mission of Los Angeles on Skid Row, and on behalf of Willie Jordan, the president of the mission. Just to, first of all, to recognize Harley-Davidson, the awesome work that they do downtown. Um, over the years, over the, the years that they've been doing this, they've brought thousands of riders, representing hundreds of thousands of toys, and being given to children who otherwise probably would have, would not have got, received a toy for Christmas. We just would like to communicate to you the, the way the children's faces light up when they receive these toys, they, they get in the line, it's perfectly organized. First, they get to see all of the bikes that the Harley-Davidson riders ride, and everyone comes down and shakes the hands of, and the, the riders come down and shake the hands of the kids, talk to the parents, um, give them hugs, let them know how much they care for them, and then the children line up, and they go up and they pick a toy out, and there's toys stacked. It's, it's a dream come true for a child, and the child points at the toy that he wants, and the, the rider goes over and gives it the toy. So for the last, for the many years that Harley-Davidson's doing this, it's been a real blessing to the city. Secondly, we would just also like to agree with Harley-Davidson of Glendale and ask that, if there was something you could do, because we would love this event to continue, and it would greatly hurt the city of Los Angeles if the event stopped. It's one of the largest toy giveaways in the city, I believe, and, uh, it just represents so much joy for, for hurting kids.
And we know that- The ride with the toys, the, the motorcyclists take the toys on their bike-
They strap them to the front of the bike and put them in the, the carriages in the back. It's, it's an awesome sight.
And just rumble into the mission.
And they, they all ride down onto Fifth Street downtown, um, take the toys off. They bring a antique fire truck that has, that's loaded with toys. They bring, uh, they, they bring dogs and, and riding motorcycles. It's just an awesome event. They've never seen anything like it.
Past years in the paper.
Yeah, it's incredible.
It's just unfortunate that, uh, today, we're looking at tightening up the purse strings on every single event in Glendale and charging for every single possible service, no matter how great a cause it is.
Yes, sir.
That was going to be charged, so staff will get with them.
Thank you very much.
Hope it all works out for you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Just a second.
Sir, I'm going to make your Christmas wishes come true. After Yasmin is done with the police department and whatever it turns out, give me the bill. Merry Christmas for those kids.
Fred Jordan Mission, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Craig Yasi.
This is, uh, yeah, city council and Mayor Weaver, this is kind of a lighter note. This is to let you know that in town, we have a, a group of parents who put together-
Name for the record first.
Oh, oh, Craig, Craig Yasi, representing Stepping Stone Players, representing Stepping Stone Players. Anyway, we have a Glendale Community Theater Group called Stepping Stone Players, and we spend time with the kids all summer long putting together shows, or a show every year, and this year, it's Guys and Dolls. We are in partnership with the Glendale Unified School District up at Hoover, so that's where we're putting the show on, and we had a tremendous opening last week, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday matinee, and again, it'll take place this coming Friday night, Saturday night, and a Sunday matinee, and then the following week, the same way. On this coming Sunday, we will be having, um, American Sign Language people come in and sign the entire show on Sunday matinee and next Sunday matinee, so that a child who is deaf can also hear or see the program and, and be a, be a part of this whole thing. It's a great show, we want the community to know about it. We think you guys do a great job, and because you do such a great job, I'd like to give these five tickets, I'm not sure if that's legal, to give them to, I'll give them to Artie here, and then he can maybe pass these out to-
Depends on the value. What's the value?
Normally, it's $15 to get in, it's a, you know, cheap price. We'd love, we'd love you to come, you know, give that to somebody or come yourself.
Attorney said we're safe.
And, and see what we do. It's a great show. We use professional choreographers and directors and musicians, there's a, there's a band of 15 people that, that play, and the, the kids of our community get to work with professionals, and you should see what they do. This is, this is not a hokey, you know, little deal. This is, this is, I, I've been told a number of times over and over again, this is like the Amundsen Theater brought to Glendale for only 15 bucks. So it's just a great, great show. Hope you all enjoy it, okay?
Where, where is it again?
It's at the Hoover High School Auditorium.
Hoover High School Theater?
Yeah. And we've been, this is our eighth year, I mean, our seventh year, excuse me, our seventh year of doing this. So it's a lot of fun, you'll enjoy it. We just hope to get the word out to everybody.
And can we get tickets at the door if we-
Tickets at the door. The theater holds 1,200.
Okay.
I'd love to have 1,200 in there, but you know, on average, it's about 200 or so. So we've got lots of room, just come to the door, come on in.
And it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, this week and next week only?
Exactly. Friday night, Saturday nights at 7:00 p.m., and then on Sunday at 2:00 o'clock matinee.
Okay.
And it's really, if you enjoy the signing, it's a, it's a wonderful thing to see these people sign this whole entire show, and this is all singing and dancing and just incredible, incredible things.
There are no assigned seats, it's just-
No, no, no assigned seats, exactly right. All good questions, yeah. So come enjoy yourself and have a good time, get away from the pressures of being on city council. I see what you mean. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Timothy Catledge, followed by Harry Zallos.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Tim Catledge, council members. I'm here to talk about segregation, which is an old word and a word I come up with influence. Now, as you know, with the last past two weeks in the Glendale news press, a lot of the citizens of Glendale have been talking about, uh, development of this property over Locust Center and the Armenian High School. I'm more concerned with the Armenian High School from the point of view that they want, uh, private, and I mean, it's private, they call it private, but it, it seems like it's only for just Armenian students, 500, I guess they said in the press. So a lot of the citizens are writing against that, and I see one word that comes up in some of it is segregation. I just want to read this real quick, it's very short. Call me crazy, and some will call me a lot worse, just watch, but I keep hearing that the way to peace and harmony among all the peoples of the land is to turn away from segregation. The entire Glendale foothills region is becoming more balkanized, with Koreans isolating themselves here, Armenians keeping to themselves there, and the rest of us worrying why nobody wants to say hello or even acknowledge that we live here, too. And here I was always taught that America was, was great because it was not, it was, it was a melting pot, not anymore. And that was Jim Chase. Thank you, Jim. Now, segregation has been among us in the past for years, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80 years, with, you know, my ancestors, black ancestors, we couldn't, you know, we couldn't, uh, go to, uh, we had to be segregated in schools, we couldn't go to white schools because of segregation. And, and bathrooms, we had to go to separate bathrooms and stuff like that. So as time went, went along, we started evolving from that, because it, it doesn't work. Something that's, that was put in by the government, it turned out to be unconstitutional, and it just didn't work. So now we get to the present time, we get to the present day era, and we get groups of people that want to be separated, you know? And it was an article by Anna Armikian, she says, well, why do Armenians want an Armenian high school? Because they're afraid of- Because they're afraid of their children becoming American, becoming the history of our language, learning English and stuff like that, that's what they're afraid of. My answer to that is, all you have to do is go back to Armenia, and it won't happen. Why should they be afraid of the kids learning, they want the kids to learn Armenian history and stuff like that, they fear they're going to lose that, and that doesn't make any sense, how are you going to lose something? You're in, you're in another country, America, you know, we represent all people, we're trying to get away from segregation. And, and the other word I'm using is influence, when you got a large number of people of one race that's in a city, you know, like Los Angeles, you got a lot of Spanx in certain areas, and a third generation Hispanic person was saying, when I walk around there, I don't see anybody speaking English or nothing, and the shops and everything else, and he was saying, I feel like I'm in Mexico. And I don't want to feel like here in Glendale, that I'm, that I'm in a, because they use the term sister, that Glendale's a sister city of Armenia, you know, I don't want to be a sister city of Armenia, I don't want to be a brother city of Armenia, you know, I don't want to feel like I'm walking through parts that seem like Armenia, I don't know how Armenia is over in Armenia, but I don't want to feel like I'm walking through there, you see, and that's what we call influence. And, and, and this, and this very learned, if God was saying they have certain things like that going on in other countries, like China, you want to influence the population, but you get all, you get all segment of people a Hezbollah, like they did, in what's going on right now. You see, they slip their people in there, and they get so many numbers of people in there, and they can influence different things in that country.
Thank you. Mr. Menucha?
Yes, Mr. Weaver, I don't want to respond to this gentleman, he's not worthy of a response.
Thank you.
But I do want to clarify one issue that I've been hearing in the community quite a bit, and that's, and I know the community is aware of this, that the issue of an Armenian High School, or an Armenian school, is really not based on race, and that anyone in the community, regardless of their heritage, or religion, or anything else, is able to attend those schools. There's a number of schools, including elementary and junior high schools, that are called Armenian schools, and they have the normal curriculum that is recommended by the state of California, and no one is accepted from attending those schools. I just want to clarify that for the community, because some of the information was not correct.
Thank you very much for that. Next speaker, Harry Zavos, followed by Michael Morgan.
My name is Harry Zavos. It's been my practice, as everybody but Mr. Agajian, Agajarian would know, that on occasions when I have submitted letters to the news press, I have given a dense copy to members of this council, and I think all except one of you has been recipient of those letters. And I think Mr. Howard will indicate that at times when I've come to speak before this council publicly on legal issues, I've given him a heads up as to what I intended to say, I take no pleasure in sandbagging. I have written a letter to the news press, which if they publish it, requests certain information of the council regarding the legal parameters involved in the development of the Mountain Oaks property. I had intended to bring those letters and distribute them to you, but I'm growing along in the tooth, and I'm afraid that the pace of my absent mindedness is keeping pace, and I left them at work, I will try to get them to you by the end of this week. I was going to make comments based on that letter, I will not engage in those comments, but maybe, let me make three points in anticipation of your receiving those letters. Number one, the letter in no way reflects on the merits or demerits of a private school on the property, I have not given it much thought to respond one way or the other. Two, I think the information is reasonable and should be out in the public. Three, I've asked for some of this information informally and privately, and it's true that the proposal or the news about a possible development in the area has prompted this public request, and I could understand how the council may think that request is premature, given that there is no proposal before the council. I happen to think it is not premature, I think the information need clear the air and lay to rest any unfounded misinformation or suspicions. Mayor, having said that, there are some comments that I would like to make, triggered by the presence of the previous speaker here, not so much based on his comments tonight as some comments that were made two or three weeks ago, and if I take a little more time, I hope you will indulge me, because this is very, very close to my heart, I will try to be as brief as possible. I thought comments were made that were a slur on an entire ethnic group. I found them not only personally offensive, but I was embarrassed for the speaker. Now, I am the child of two Greek immigrants. My father learned perfect English, my mother had a learning disability for 50 years, was unable to master English, although she understood it, and it was one of the bane's of her existence that didn't make her any less an American, and it didn't make her less embracing of this country. I can remember spending hours going through questions that were in the Greek newspaper, some 200, 250 questions that might be asked of you if you were going to get your citizenship, because it was so important for her to get her citizenship, and the fear that she wouldn't get it caused her to put it off for any number of years. She did get that citizenship, she was proud of it, and she was an informed citizen that always exercised her franchise. In my house, there was no doubt that we were Greek Americans, and there was no doubt that the noun was American, and Greek was the adjective. She fully embraced this country and was a wonderful American citizen. She raised two children, one of whom obtained a PhD as well as a law degree, and of our four grandchildren, two are doctors, and the remaining two are lawyers. Now, you can understand with that background why I found those comments offensive. I felt that there was some feeling on the council that they were, they would want to, because of their offensiveness, prevent him from continuing, the council did not. I bring that up because I think something that is even more fundamental to me is the First Amendment and how basic it is to our form of government. My commitment to the First Amendment occurred long before I understood its role, its foundational role in our form of government. When as a elementary school student in a social studies class, yes, in those days they did teach social studies in elementary school, I heard of Thomas Paine's comment, I disagree with what you say, but I will defend with my life your right to say it. I can understand, I will just take 30 seconds, Mayor, I can understand the desire to suppress that kind of speech, but in our form of government, we depend on those ideas shriveling, not because state actors suppress their expression, but because of the poverty of their content.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council persons and staff, my name is Michael Morgan, and I'm a 51-year resident of Glendale. I would first like to prematurely congratulate the council for adopting the historic districting guidelines for Glendale. I know I'm a little early here, but this is a great moment for all of Glendale, which has a rich architectural history. Second, I would like to invite the city council and all Glendale residents, Crescent Valley residents, to the first annual Crescent Valley Home Tour, Saturday, October 14th, 2006, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, starting at the American Legion Hall, 4011 La Cressena Avenue. We are showcasing five homes, plus the American Legion Hall, which was a structure where 12 people perished in the 1934 New Year's Day flood in Montrose. We have five different homes. We have a new home, which is a solar house, a house designed with the best of old stone construction, but with modern flair such as passive and active solar power. We have the old house, a classic stone and wood house representing the stone houses which are the icon of the Crescent Valley. We have a pioneer home, built by the pioneer Bonnetto family in the Crescent Valley, and is now been named a Glendale Historic Landmark. We also have an architectural house, the Eric Lloyd Wright House. Eric Lloyd Wright was the grandson of the architect Frank Lloyd Wright, and the house has an extremely bold and modern design. Finally, we have the ever-present Craftsman House, which was originally, which originally was a stucco box, recently converted into a palace of craftsman architecture by a local builder and architects. Advanced tickets are $10 and can be obtained by calling 818-248-6762, or at the Montrose Farmers Market on Sundays in Montrose. Tickets will be $12 a day of the event. All proceeds go to help the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley in preserving and curating the Crescent Valley's history. Additional information can be obtained at cvheritage.org. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
It's this Saturday?
No, it's-
October, okay.
October 14th, we're just letting you know ahead of time.
Okay.
Mrs. Beers, would you mind checking with staff, find out, many moons ago, I asked about opening up the council chambers, say at 5:00, for anybody that wanted to promote any event or anything in Glendale, that they can come in and get five minutes on television or anything, so when we got to the council meeting, it stayed more onto the business of the community, because we do take, seems like we take more and more time to promote a lot of events, and that was supposed to be positive that we would do it, but I haven't heard anything.
I know that there were discussions, Mr. Mayor, and we'll check back and see where we are with those discussions.
I think that moved things along, and we wouldn't seem like everything is so great in Glendale during the council meeting. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is adoption of ordinances. At 7A is ordinance adding section 4.12.070 to Title IV of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the awarding of contracts under $50,000 without competitive bidding and establishing a procedure offered on 9/05/06 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Yusefian?
Mr. Mayor, I move 7B. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
At 7B is ordinance amending sections as listed of Title II, and sections as listed of Title 15, and sections as listed of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to historic preservation of historic districts offered on 9/05/06 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Mayor, I move 7B. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Mr. President.
Okay. All right, thank you. At, next item-
She apologized for leaving.
Yeah. Said she didn't want to disrespect you, and she just wanted to let you know that-
Well, no, she should have left earlier, and she would have missed all my speeches. Thank you for staying.
8A is Director of Information Services regarding radio systems maintenance. At 8A1 is motion authorizing the city manager to exercise a renewal option with Motorola Inc. for maintenance of the city's public safety radio communications infrastructure.
I'll move 8A1. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
I see Mr. Veronic sitting back there, so I know I have no question.
Miracles do happen, even in this day and age. Get out of here while you can. Next, please.
8B, Director of Planning regarding historic surveys of Craftsman Houses in multifamily zones, resolution of appropriation.
I'll move 8B1. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. No cards on anything. Hey, 9 is hearings.
It's a historic day, it looks like.
Looks like it. Keep your fingers crossed.
No, it looks like that.
Don't anybody in the audience put a card in, we're going to have a historic day in here.
10-minute warning, I think is working.
9 is hearings.
Yeah, 9, 9A, please.
Director of Planning regarding historic resource designation and Mills Act contract for the property at 2819 Manhattan Avenue. At 9A1 is resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing a Mills Act contract.
I could open the public hearing, have no cards, close the public hearing, Mr. Yusefian?
Move 9A, second. 1.
8A1? Moved and seconded, discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next.
At 9B, this is Director of Planning regarding historic resource designation and Mills Act contract for property at 850 Cumberland Road. At 9B1 is resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing a Mills Act contract.
Mr. Yusefian?
You want to open the hearing?
I'll move 9B1.
Oh, wait, 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 I'll open the public hearing, I have no cards, I close the public hearing.
I'll move 9B1.
And I'll second that, and I must say, this is a very, very, very nice example of a historic Spanish house.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Very nice. Not that the last one wasn't, but that was not Spanish, it was more English, so very nice. I, Menucha moved it, and I'll second it, very nice.
Okay, no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 9C.
And at 9C is a hearing, Director of Planning regarding proposed ordinance amending titles 16 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to revisions and miscellaneous cleanup amendments to the subdivision and zoning code chapter. At 9C1, ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Yusefian?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce the ordinance at 9C1, I think this is the same one that we had-
We have a study session.
Oh, we, this is the same one we did the study session, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you want to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing, I have no cards, public hearing is closed.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, what is next, please?
Next is reports and information, seeing as there is none-
Well, I have, may I interrupt?
What?
Certainly.
I have the opportunity to introduce a new staff member, and I had the opportunity to introduce a new staff member tonight, she had several reports on, and since you didn't ask for a presentation, you had the pleasure.
It's her lucky day today.
So if I may just introduce her to you, because she's going to be a very important member of our staff.
Well, that could have been do-
She's been with us for a couple of months, and her name's Cindy Tomac, and she's got a master's degree in historic preservation from Michigan State University, and she's worked at the state, county, and local levels, including being the historic preservation officer for Long Beach, the historic preservation officer in Riverside County, and she was also the historic preservation officer for Michigan State, or in Michigan State. I just think that it's a wonderful thing that tonight was her first opportunity to show how great she is, and she saw such a rare occasion that all the items went through it away, but I just wanted you to meet Cindy, because you'll be seeing her in future.
So it happens all the time. Cindy, you are, you are so good, you didn't even have to say anything, right there. You're done.
You're a Spartan? I'm a Trojan. It's okay.
I'm a matador.
Enough on the Greek history.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, wait.
Is there something else?
I would like to request that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of those who perished on September 11th, 2001, and-
Good. Wholeheartedly, Mr. Menucha.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
That were adjourned at 7:30.